First group to go through that, and we have a meeting that we'll set up with them and kind of go through what we've developed so far and kind of let them know the expectations we have, who to contact, if there's any issues. Encourage them to meet their neighbors, help facilitate that, and kind of give them that level of expectations that we expect in downtown Mesa. And, of course, introduce ourselves, DMA, as the point of contact to, to kind of be that first line of, of any questioning, concerns, how to deal with issues if they come up and arise, but definitely give that first level of expectations of how we'd like to see them operate in downtown Mesa.
You know, I looked on the application, it says applicant is a broker. How do we ever find out who the true applicant is, or do we?
Mayor, Councilmember Fenter, we can do that, I, if that's something you'd like to know, we can get that into our packets and let you know who that is. Usually it's the broker that deals with everything, but yeah, if you have an interest in knowing who the actual applicant will be, we can certainly let you know that as well.
It's kind of interesting, the, the current owners is a group called Roosters.
Yes.
And, you know, different people know different things, so it'd be nice to know who the new future applicant is.
Okay. On, on 3A, we do know who that applicant is, that was in there, that's, uh, hang on one second, I think I have that in my packet. It's a gentleman, though, that's, that's actually owning it, so, yeah, it's Marco, correct?
Right. Marco Martinez.
Marco Martinez.
Okay, so they, I thought they had that, him as a broker, but he's the actual owner?
He's, he's going to be the actual applicant and the actual owner of the, of business, we'll be dealing with him directly, correct? Yeah, so yeah, he's just not, he's just not brokering the deal, that's correct, he'll actually have involvement in the business.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then, Mayor, Council, I have a couple of items on the liquor licenses, if I may?
Go right ahead.
Let's see, I just want to point out that item 3C, they're just looking for sampling privileges, that's another Sprouts coming through, we'll start seeing a few more of those. The next agenda's got some more coming up, too, more and more establishments are looking to get the sampling privileges. So Sprouts already has, I'm sorry, already has a liquor license, they're just looking for the sampling privileges. And, and really all we do is, we just, once it's approved or recommended through council and the state buys off on it, then we just change the license from a 10 to a 10S, or a 9 to a 9S, that gives them the rights to have sampling privileges.
Perfect, that's kind of, that was the thing, that, so it's just like a, a tag on to a liquor license?
Yep, it doesn't change anything, it just, we just add a S to the list, and that's all the state does, too, is they just take it to an ass.
So anybody could have, so anyone could do those, any kind of store that has, like Sam's Club, Costco, we don't have Sam's Club, Costco or Albertson's or anybody?
They could, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, anyone that possesses that type of a license.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, let's see, on 3D, General Dollar Store, because they're a nationwide company, they do have a lot of stores, so they do have a few violations that came up, but there are none in Arizona, but all the violations that came up have been resolved. But we just wanted to point that out, because they have hundreds of licenses throughout the United States. So we do a complete check on that, or at least the, the liquor board does, and they send that back to us. So I'm just letting you guys know that we have, that that did pop up on there. As far as Chubby Hubby's BBQ, which is 3F, we have two, two items with that. One is the manager, back in 2009, had a fine from the DLLC for not abiding by a 40% rule. He had another license, so in that license, he didn't abide by the 40% rule, so they were fined for that, he did pay that fine. And he was also charged with buying merchandise outside of the authorized vendors. You have to buy from a distributor, so they got charged for that and were fined for that, but they did pay those fines. So everything's cleared up with that, but it is a 2009 violation that showed up.
Where do you buy, if you don't buy from an authorized distributor? Some guy, some guy in his garage, or what? Oh, you go to Costco?
There you go.
Okay.
You can't do that.
Well, you can do that, you just can't serve, you can't resell it.
Very true.
Can't serve it, okay, gotcha.
And then we're going to be recommending that, or we will be pulling Chubby Hubby's off for the next agenda, due to the fact that they have not-
We would like to note that Councilmember Higgins knew that rule very, very well, by the way.
I don't know why.
I don't know why either.
Very good, and then we'll be recommending that we pull 3F and move it to the next agenda, because they have not paid their licensing application fees yet. We have been in contact with them, we've had three or four different contacts, we've actually personally spoken with them as late as yesterday, and they were going to begin to pay, and they have not yet, so we're going to move them into the next agenda for that. So we'll be removing or recommending-
Who's who knows that?
Remove 3F to the next agenda. Yes, Chubby Hubby's.
Okay.
3F to the next agenda.
All right.
Piggly's at the Fair is 3H, the applicant that's on that has a DUI, it's a personal DUI, obviously, and she's just completing her sentence with that, so in February of 2013, she will have completed the interlock. She's on an interlock device right now, so-
And that's the applicant?
That's the applicant, and that's something, again, that's asked on the-
What's with this group? I mean, you know, we, we go like years, we go like years without having trouble, and all of a sudden, it's, they all show up at the same time?
And actually, I had five of them on this one, we've cleared up two of the three, or two of the five, so we had five issues on these. So anyway, we've got those picked, cleared up, anyway, I just wanted to point that out, because they do ask that on state application, she did disclose, like she was supposed to. And, but, and that will be resolved in February of 2013, she will have successfully completed all of her items.
Can I ask a question? So you, you said she just didn't properly disclose everything? Okay, great, thanks.
Yes, you're welcome.
The worst thing is, is that she got a DUI from stuff she bought from a non-distributor. And she was sampling, she was sampling while she did that, yeah.
That's all I have.
Do you, okay, all these, they seem like minor technical things, but they, you know, obviously, even a technical, minor thing can point to a larger problem. So what you're saying is staff doesn't believe that these minor items really create a, a significant problem that would cause us, that you would, cause you to recommend denial?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Okay, thanks. Okay, items 4A through 4C. 4D and 4E, Council, uh, Mr. Brady.
Mayor, Council, on item 4D, I think we'd like to have a presentation from the police department about these mobile fingerprint workstations. They've been very effective, we've been testing a few, and so I'd like, Chief Mace is here, just kind of talk a little bit about their effectiveness, and then why we're moving forward with the additional 30.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, we'd like to present this item here, it's really a cutting-edge technology in law enforcement. And I'd like to introduce Sergeant Tony Landato and Officer Matt Westberg, who has been really effective. They just want to cover kind of what it is, and then some of our success stories we've had with this item so far.
Well, this is something that started July 4th, that holiday DUI task force weekend. We got six of these devices out in the field in this pilot program for the last six months. Currently, they're all deployed in patrol, one in each of the districts, during some of our projects, we've had, had them deployed there also. They've been a great success for us, very helpful, we've even brought one of the devices here. Matt Westberg, one of our senior patrol officers, could come around and show you exactly how it works.
Are you suggesting that we test it for some reason?
No, we're not going to run any prints here.
Can I, can I have my attorney present, please?
While I'm talking, if you want, he can walk around-
Personal attorney.
He can kind of show you how, how simple they are and how quickly they work, none of these will be run, it's just showing you how the device-
Yeah, that's what the last guy told me, too. Next thing I know, I'm applying for a liquor license, and they're telling me that there's a problem.
I think for us, the important thing to remember, how it, how it assists our law enforcement purpose, is it's going to give us decreased detention times when we're stopping subjects on the street, we're trying to determine who we're dealing with. It's pretty common practice for a bad guy not to carry any ID, or at the very least, not let us know that they have any on them. And so we're, we're trying to sort through what we have, this is a, a great tool that allows us to take care of it right there. The, the turnaround time is one to two minutes, and it, it basically goes through currently our Arizona AFIS system, but we're looking into having it feed into the federal AFIS system also, that's be the next step.
Want, also mention, we are one of the first agencies in the state to start utilizing this in, in large quantities. We have a lot of the other agencies in the valley have come to us, and they're looking at how we've been able to use the technology, and how we've been able to have some success with it, so we are leaders in that area.
And to, to just accentuate that, we, I mean, in dealing with the media, we're, we're, the media comes at us, says, why is Mesa seems to be like the, on the technological leader in every aspect of law enforcement throughout the city. And we definitely promote that, obviously, because it happens to be true, and this is just- one of those tools, but I mean, other agencies literally call our, other agencies call our office, the media relations, and, and are asking about it, too. So, to give you some examples of how we use it, where it's been successful, some of the more obvious ones, again, when you have someone who is not, you know, tell, you know, not giving you the correct name, you're getting no record found, we've had many situations where officers are reporting that they're dealing with that. Subject just verbally gives them their name, they end up getting a fingerprint from them, come to find out, it's someone else, there's warrants that they're dodging. And one of the more notable, successful cases, what's a few months into this pilot, we responded to a domestic violence call. The suspect had fled, was in the area, so we set up a perimeter, our officers stopped a subject who matched the description. He was acting very suspicious, we ended up, he didn't have any ID, couldn't find a record, we ran his fingerprint. It was not our suspect in the domestic violence, but it was a homicide suspect out of AJ that was being looked for. So he was taken into custody, and that helped with a homicide investigation.
Oh, can I, yeah, so like, old-school prints where it's, you know, prints type thing, do they get scanned in? Is that how that works, and then, how far back do we have, you know, did they scan fingerprints in? I mean, like, this is all electronic, so only those who are electronically scanned are going to be in your system, is my guess?
Yeah, this is, this is run through the AFIS, Arizona AFIS system, so any prints that are captured in our Arizona AFIS system is what the, this device will run.
So do you know how far back the Arizona AFIS system went to pick up prints? Just, you know, guess, 20 years, 25?
I would say at least 15.
15, I, I got a head shake from 20 back there, so, okay.
Actually, one of the, one of the agenda items are, is to replace our, some of our print stations that are all scan, scanning.
So no one's using ink and sticking their finger on anything anymore? How long have you not been doing that, just like?
Our LiveScan machines?
Well, that, that's what I meant, I think about 15 years.
Oh, so we've been scanning fingerprints for, since we've had scanners?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So what I was asking was, you know, the hard stuff, are those being scanned in? Like, do you have fingerprints in the system from somebody?
The older ones that were taken? I, I believe that they are, but I don't know the definitive answer.
Somebody in the back knows, they're coming forward, yay!
Right, so, so we actually still do imprint as well, but any, all ones that are actually imprint, they are scanned and put into the system. So all prints historically are in there.
So, did, did they go back, is there like, you know, grad students or volun, yeah, those people? There are summer interns sitting there scanning stuff somewhere?
Um, our fingerprint identification unit does that, and we are current with everything that we have.
So really, so everything we had on file in the city of Mesa has been scanned into, wow, that's great, because I would assume that's a lot.
It is.
And once you scan it from a hard copy, do you lose anything, or it's still pretty good?
Oh, no, it's still good, anytime that we get a match in AFIS, the actual hard print copy is, is pulled, and our latent print identification unit will actually do the, the physical match themselves.
Wow, great, thank you, very interesting.
You know, one thing I remember, maybe you're going to get this in your presentation, when Chief Gascon brought this about four years ago, talked about the concept, was the force multiplying effect, where currently officers, you know, if they have a suspicion, they have to go downtown and take the suspect and get out of the field, and, and then we lose an officer out in the field. But this way, they're able to kind of do it instantaneously and stay in the field, so it sounds like a great opportunity to make the best use of our people, too.
Right, and that's exactly right, I mean, typically, one of two things would happen, if, if we're dealing with someone, you know, we're working with, obviously, detention times, you know, we're going to arrest or not, we would either call a CST to come down, print them right there at the stop, if we, if we feel like we're going to have to release them, or try to arrange either through consent, or if we have enough to take them downtown for a one-roll, to get them identified, and then further our investigation. Now you can take all that out of the equation, and like I said, in a one-to-two-minute turnaround, find your answer there on the street. And, and this really goes beyond even that, I know, like, for instance, Phoenix PD had a success story that, in a fatal traffic accident, they were trying to identify the fatality victim, and they didn't have ID. I think this person was still trapped in a mangled car, and they were able to fingerprint him and find out who that was. So it really even goes beyond that, just the actual law enforcement aspect, but identifying individuals, so that's, can be extremely helpful.
Vice Mayor?
Just to clarify, this device is a reader, does it upload fingerprints into AFIS, or just reads them?
It just reads them, none of this information is saved, I know I fielded many questions about that, like, this is just Big Brother. This isn't documented any more than, than the stop itself, the officer will take it back to his car, hook it up, it's run through, and then if there's a hit, then obviously our investigation will continue, you know, but that's it. We don't store them, we're not documenting every time someone's been stopped, or anything like that.
Thank you. Reminds me of a time I saw where there was a, a girl passed out in an alleyway, and the police came and did a retina scan, oh wait, that was Back to the Future 2. But if you think about it, not really, that was made in like, what, 1987, I think? And you look and say, oh my gosh, officers in the street to be able to figure out an identity, because she had, no, obviously, she was only 17 at the time, well, wait, now who knows? But you look at that, you look at some of those things that, you know, 30 years ago, you say this would never happen. Granted, it's not a retina scan, but it's amazing that officers could do that in the street.
Well, I can go you one better, the same company, and we're going to be getting and testing these devices soon. It's in the final testing, is actually not the actual fingerprints, but we'll be able to do latent fingerprints, meaning prints that are picked up from a crime scene in a similar device will be able to be run right there on the spot.
Basically just takes a-
So you can imagine how helpful that would be to an investigation, instead of a day or two, we're getting it on the spot, and we can go track down a suspect or a lead before they have time to get rid of evidence, or come up with an alibi, or flee, or whatever. So that's next, and we will be the only department using that when it comes.
Well, that's great, we have that kind of technology, we just don't have, we just don't have hovercrafts yet.
And we're not going to do it.
Or hover skateboards.
Isn't there an app for this?
Probably.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Items 4F through 4H, Councilmember Higgins?
Mayor, I have an item, item, I have a question on item 4F, which is, oh, what are we talking about? We're talking about a wet lab photoprocessor. And the question is, it's, it seems like there's only, you know, there was a model that you wanted, and we got it from a vendor, and it seems like that was the only one that could supply it. So, and I don't know if it's a police issue as much as it's a person, purchasing issue, but we, you know, instead of like, laying out specifications of what we want and what something has to do, we kind of say, oh, we need this machine, so then we don't have this big open-
We, we actually did do that, we laid out the specifications that we need, and we actually went out to bid the first time, and just got the one return, and we actually went out to bid a second time and still just got one return.
So there's only that one company that even makes that?
That, I understand that there are more companies, but none of them participated in the bid process.
Okay.
Were they con, were they contacted directly, or was this just posted online?
I do not know the answer to that.
Procurement does.
Going back to my notes here. We did have a bid list that included, we did have eight vendors that downloaded the bid opportunity, we had three vendors that were on our known bid list, but then it was also carried on our website, as well as in the Arizona Republic.
Okay, so people had, we know that people took a look at this and decided not to submit a bid for that? The new folks on the bid, are we going to add those to the bid list?
Yes.
Or, okay.
But, to follow up on his, is, is it because they don't, they don't have anything that comes near the specifications, or they just didn't answer? It sounds like they just didn't answer.
I would agree with you, they just didn't answer.
So, do you think that we were writing this so narrowly that they couldn't answer if they wanted to, because they don't make? You know, I understand when we had like, water resources parts, where we're buying parts that have to interchange with original equipment, so we only can use that one vendor, right? But when we're buying something new, unless there's something that wasn't told in the, in the staff report, this is a standalone unit, it's not like a piece of another big unit, you know what I'm saying? Like, when we end up in water resources buying equipment, because, you know, part A connects to part B, so we have to buy the original part A. We can't go to some other item, but this is, sounds like it's a standalone photop, and it, you know what, it's not like huge, it's just, it's the, it was kind of the principle of, of the purchase, is that, you know, it kind of only directed it down one path to one-
There, there were two products when the, the bid went out, that were deemed as acceptable products to respond on, and we did only get the one response.
Okay, great, thanks.
The items 4I through 4K. 4L through 4N. 4O through 4Q. 4R and 4S. 4T through 5A. 5B through 6A. Councilmember Glover?
Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on 6A, I serve on the Barry and Peggy Goldwater Library and Archives Foundation Board.
Okay, thank you. Jim Geniak, you want to come up and give us a bit of information on 6A? Jerry, Doug, good seeing you again.
Morning, sir.
Morning, Mayor, morning, Council, it's good to be back for 2013, I think you know Mr. Barry Eisenhower, and who's the program manager for the Barry and Peggy Goldwater Library and Archives, and Doug Sador, who is the architect for the project this morning. When we left off at the end of the year last year, we had a three-story building that was about 40,000 square feet, estimated for about 57,000 visitors, and I think important also is, becomes a fourth cultural asset in the heart of our downtown. What's in front of you today is a, an MOU, it's intended to be the deal points that have been worked out with them. This is the basis for a very detailed development agreement that's projected to come in the next few months. Let me just touch on a couple of key points in this. It is located on the southeast corner of McDonald and First Avenue. It is a 30-year lease, it's projected to be the land lease for a dollar a year. The city is being asked to contribute utilities under a budget, that cap has to be negotiated out, and what that details works out to be. And the other thing we have added is helping with the abandonment of a portion of McDonald's. So we're actually going to be looking at going into the right-of-way on, on the west side of the property. So, in exchange for that, the Library and Archives will actually design, build, finance through fundraising, operate and maintain the facility. I can't stress that enough, Doug has talked about everything from form-based zoning to energy conservation measures, and coordination, and this is important coordination with the senior housing developer, which is to the east as well, and he's in the middle of doing that, I think, as we, as we speak. They are also looking to provide all content, and will be operating and staffing the facility as we go forward. There is, the only other thing I'm going to point out here, the property, once it's completed, will be deeded back to the city. So after the building is built, everything's taken care of, it will be deeded back to us, is what's in the MOU. Timeline, we get the MOU approved here on Monday, we expect the next three months, and be back to you sometime in April, is the projected timeline for the development agreement. During that time, fundraising is scheduled, and for later on this month, next, next week?
Uh, next Thursday.
Next Thursday, and I think we're, that'll be an ongoing process, it'll be various milestones as we add through the MOU. So that's the general piece of, of things, are you open to any questions from there?
I know we haven't gotten into, into the depth of it, but utilities are already in place in this thing. So the incremental amount of utilities, as we see it now, do we have any idea what that might be? Is there any, based on our preliminary analysis? Because when you say city will contribute utilities, well, if utilities are basically already in place, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done on that, is that, is that accurate?
Yes, Mary Smith, we did do a conceptual study a few months back, and our guestimate was approximately $200,000 per year.
Okay.
As a guideline.
All right.
All right, Councilmember Richens?
So it's not the installation of utilities, it's the ongoing payment of the utility bill?
That's correct.
Okay.
Operating, that's right.
Wait, so, $200,000 a year for city utilities? Is that what you just, what you just said?
The whole roster of utilities that would support the facility, that would be the annual tab for them, it's a guestimate.
Is that an, is that an annual number?
That was an annual number.
Yeah, okay.
It's electric, it's got to be the electric side. Mostly it has to be an electric side, is what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, all the utilities are there, we provide all utilities in that area, so, we are the utility company in downtown.
What's the, what's the cap?
I, I don't think we've negotiated the cap at this point, I think that's what we have to work out in the development agreement. It's just all the utilities, all the operating side of the utilities are on the table, and we have to negotiate that cap out.
Okay. We're anxious to see how that plays out.
Yeah, I'd like to see a good analysis of that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Perry? Oh, no, you pointed to Perry.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything else you wanted to add this morning, so.
Hey, thank you, we're really excited about this.
As we are.
And I, I was anxious to be at the first thing, but fortunately, I'm going to be out of town, so, looking forward to see how the fundraising proceeds. Councilmember Richens?
Um, just, if, if this is on the agenda for Monday, are we going to have that utility number before?
Remember, this is just the-
Just the MOU.
This is just the MOU.
Okay, that's, that's just the concept, okay, that's fine, got it, okay.
All righty, thank you. Okay. Next item is to acknowledge receipts of ministers, boards, and committees, we have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Higgins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, here reports of meetings and conferences attended. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, on January 5th, I had the opportunity to work once again with the Run, Walk, and Roll event that's sponsored in part by the City of Mesa, which is a one-mile fun-run, 5K or 10K, that, and, that supports disabled sports. So I did the 10K run, and they asked that not only do you run that event, if you have the opportunity, we do this every year in January, you get to choose your own distance, but if you could bring a friend as well, and I had two folks from work come with me, one of them brought his wife, and my son Tyler ran with me, and I'm happy to report I beat my 18-year-old son in a 10K race.
Yay, good job.
Now he's going to get, I'm sure you let me win.
Okay, anything else? Oh, would like to thank everyone, for those of us who did get sworn in, thanks everyone on staff and the community for supporting that. That was a, a change in, in procedure, and I, you know, personally, I think it was a nice, a nice change of pace to do a separate event, and the feedback I got was generally very, very positive. It was nice to sort of do a swearing-in and not all of a sudden start talking about sewer connections right after it. Liquor licenses and things like that, which we've done in the past, I remember four and a half years ago, where that night, you know, we get sworn in, we're all on a high, and next thing you know, we got people standing in front of us within five minutes yelling at us because- I remember four and a half years ago where that night, you know, we get sworn in, we're all on a high, and next thing you know, we got people standing in front of us within five minutes yelling at us because we're approving a budget. Welcome to office. So this, this was, I, I, this was a lot more, I always use the word casual, but it was, it seemed to be fitting because it focused on the moment and on the event. And it's not about us, it's about, it's about the city and the offices and the form of governments that we have. You know, it doesn't matter who the people are up there. It, it's, it's just important to remember that this is an institution that's important. You know, government is, especially in this country, is really representative of the people. We need to remember that. And the city government is especially that because we are the, we are the government that's the closest to the people. And I think that on a day-in and day-out basis, we have significant impact in, on the lives of our citizens. And we take that, we take that responsibility very seriously. So it was very nice to, to have that. So, Mr. Brady, thank you, for those of you and the staff who came up with the idea and also who, who, who carried it out. It was very nice. Thanks. Any other events? Thank you, Councilmember Higgins. All right, Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we do have our first meeting of the new year, of the council meeting of the new year on Monday. We'll have a study session and council meeting. And then Saturday, the 19th, just to remind everyone, from 8:30 to noon, will be the Mesa Grande Cultural Center grand opening. We'll have more information about that, but that'll be an exciting event in Mesa. So I think that'll include a pancake breakfast, I understand. So it should be fun. So, thank you.
Great. All right. Yeah, and welcome, a new face. And for the first time in an official capacity.
She already gave me homework.
Good. Are there any requests to speak?
No requests, Mayor.
You performed well, thank you. Okay, we have a motion adjourned, Councilmember Finter, a second, Councilmember Richens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.